And Happy New Year. I'd like to call to order the January 9th meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, note the presence of all three commissioners. So I would like, who am I going to call to do the pledge? Marty, I'm going to have you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
All right. Good morning and Happy New Year. Thank you all for being here. First, I want to start by acknowledging a tragic event that occurred on New Year's Day in New Orleans. Fifteen people were killed and three dozen people were injured in a horrific truck attack on Bergen Street. One of the injured was Montgomery County native Ryan Quigley. Ryan graduated from Lansdale Catholic High School in 2016 and from Princeton University in 2020, where he was a celebrated athlete. He was the two-time MVP of Philadelphia Catholic League and played for Princeton from 2016 to 2018. Since the attack, he's been recovering while surrounded by family and will be returning home tomorrow. We wish him all the best for his continued recovery or rehabilitation, and we pray for all the victims of this tragedy. I also want to acknowledge the fire that occurred two nights ago on January 7th at Faith's Tabernacle House of Prayer on DeKalb Street. This was a historic building that unfortunately suffered significant damage, but luckily no one was hurt. I had a chance to go down and meet with first responders there yesterday, and I want to personally thank Fire Chief Tom O'Donnell and then many members of the Norristown Fire Department for their efforts to control the fire. I know this community is strong in faith, and their faith will continue to carry on forward despite this devastating event. Any other comments on the fire? Okay, hearing none. Today, January 9th, is the National Day of Mourning for President Jimmy Carter. While most local county and municipal governments remain open today, many federal agencies are closed in recognition of the passing of the former president. President Carter famously said, "The measure of a society is found in how they treat their weakest and most helpless citizens." He had an uncompromising dedication to public service, especially for those with the greatest needs. His compassion, humanity, and altruism exemplified true leadership, and I hope that his model would give us, in the generation coming up behind him, a leadership model to follow. These qualities define his lasting legacy and serve as a powerful inspiration for how we should all carry ourselves. May he rest in peace. And as we reflect on the enduring legacies, leadership, and community involved in it, we also want to recognize that Monday, January 20th, is Martin Luther King Day. Both Dr. King and President Carter came from modest beginnings in Georgia. Both were awarded the Nobel Peace Prize, and in 1980, President Carter designated Dr. King's birth home a national historic site. Montgomery County offices and services will be closed on Monday, January 20th in recognition of this federal holiday. There are events across Montgomery County honoring Dr. King with opportunities to give back to neighborhoods throughout Montgomery County. My mother and Dr. King shared a birthday, and I am continually reminded and inspired by their individual efforts to transform the lives of those around them. My mother was an educator who was devoted to supporting and lifting up others. And Dr. King was an unwavering champion for justice, and I would not be at this table if it were not without his enduring influence on our country's civil rights movement. January 20th also marks the inauguration of the upcoming new presidential administration. While new presidential administrations certainly bring change, I want to reiterate that our commitment to the residents of Montgomery County will be unchanged. I appreciate and value those who chose to serve our great nation, especially those who uplift our most vulnerable friends and neighbors. Our work is never done, and as a community leader and elected official, I remain dedicated to advocating for Montgomery County residents at all, at every level, as Martin Luther King did. On January 21st, Montgomery County will participate in an annual point in time count, a vital effort to assess the scope of homelessness within our county. The count provides essential data that helps inform and improve our policies, programs, and services aimed at addressing homelessness. We extend our gratitude to the dedicated volunteers and community partners who make this count possible. Your commitment ensures we reach those who are unsheltered, living in temporary shelters or in transitional housing. We encourage our community members to support our unhoused neighbors during this important event by going to Your Way Home, the Your Way Home website, which is yourwayhome.org, and clicking on the Wish List button to donate items. Thank you all for contributing to this critical initiative. And lastly, today's meeting is the first of the new year. We have officially worked together as a board for a full year. Time certainly moves fast. Now, 2024 was an exceptional year, and I'm deeply proud of the work that we achieved together during my first year as Chair. Soon, we will publish a report of our major accomplishments from our first year as a board. It highlights our priorities and the successes in working towards building and supporting our communities, creating economic opportunity, strengthening public safety and justice, and working towards a more open and transparent government. This includes our investments in reducing homelessness and increasing affordable housing opportunities, supporting emergency behavioral health, building and improving sustainable infrastructure projects, enacting policies to support working families, including paid leave, and investing in childcare, boosting public safety, public defense, and emergency preparedness, and enhancing our presence across the county through meetings on the road, thanks to Commissioner DiBello's idea, voter services effort, that's all Commissioner Mckeja, and better community outreach. As the Chair of this board, my goal has been to lead this county and conduct these meetings with integrity and to make decisions to improve the quality of lives of everyone who calls Montgomery County home. I take great pride in my work and all that we've achieved together as a board. This is because we've worked collaboratively and effectively, and while we haven't always agreed, we work to fulfill so many goals together as a team. I also take great pride in this leadership opportunity. I know that I was the first Black woman to chair this esteemed board, and I hope that my opportunity to chair this board will act as a model for others, generations that are coming up behind me. Today, we will vote to take, we will take a vote on the organization of this board for 2025. We've committed to shared governance. Our collective and individual priorities for this county will not change. I will continue to focus on delivering results on housing and homelessness, workforce development, healthy communities, and most importantly, caring for our most precious assets, our county employees. I am passionate about sustaining and expanding all the work we have done together, and I'm confident that as a board, we will carry the same energy and dedication into 2025, working together as a cohesive team to achieve our shared goals as a county. So with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Mckeja.
Thank you. I want to thank Commissioner Weiner for her leadership this year and just looking at the long list of accomplishments we have, there's so much to be proud of. I'm really excited to see that, although we shared some of it at the end of last year, but really historic investments across the board, public safety, public health, when it comes to taking care of our own employees, paid leave. So many of the things that we've done have really set a new standard in Pennsylvania, and thanks to your leadership, thanks to the example that you set, in the way that we work together, I think we got, we got a lot done in 2024. So looking forward to talking about what are the priorities that we're going to have in 2025, and that's good. Yeah, we've got a big year ahead of us. So I also just want to thank my comments, I wasn't able to make swearing in yesterday, but thank you to our acting controller, Tom Landauer, for his nearly a decade, actually not quite yet, the better half of a decade, his service as deputy controller since 2016. He showed consistent commitment to public service in his time, and before that was a Hatfield Township Commissioner here in the county, and you know, really brings extensive leadership in finance, and I look forward to working with you, Tom, in this role to continue to serve all the residents of the county and make sure that we can run an effective and efficient government. So look forward to seeing you at the first salary board meeting right after this. And I just also want to echo the comments regarding the fire here in Norristown, and thanks to all the first responders who were there quickly to put out the two alarm fire and all of the medication and service. So with that, I'll turn it over to, actually I have one other thing. Tomorrow, we're having the employee pin ceremony, and we're going to be honoring longtime employees of the county. We do this every year. These are folks who have worked in the county at least a decade, and there are at least two people who will be celebrating 45 years of service in the county, eight who are serving 40 years. Really excited to meet with them, to hear about their experiences, and to celebrate their long service to Monco. So please join us if you're available tomorrow. We'll post the details. With that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner DiBello.
Well, thank you. I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year and excited to see some familiar faces as we start 2025, as well as new faces in the audience, and hopefully we'll see this continue to grow. I know it's kind of cold outside, so probably people didn't want to come out in the cold weather, but I'm excited for this to be our first meeting of 2025, to be here with my fellow commissioners. As mentioned, we've had a very successful first year together in 2024. The list of accomplishments, I think, is incredible. I won't go down the whole list again, or I know that the document's going to be published with going through everything that we've done in 2024. So I feel that our first year together, working as a team, was a very successful 2024, and I look forward to us continuing this, this energy as we go into 2025. I think the best asset that Montgomery County has currently is the three commissioners that are dedicated to being a team, and I think that's extremely important. As mentioned, as Commissioner Weiner mentioned, we may not always agree, but that's okay, and that's government, but we, we have dedicated ourselves to, even when we don't agree, we move on and we continue working for the 865,000 residents of Montgomery County. So that's, that's probably our biggest accomplishment, and I want to thank Commissioner Weiner for all of her hard work in 2024 as the Chair. She definitely has exceeded my expectations as a Chair, because she did work diligently and extremely hard to make sure that we collectively were out there as a team, and she wanted to make sure that we were all equally recognized as a team, and I think that she should be very proud of that accomplishment, as well as she always took the time to reach out to the staff and employees and even with simple messages and all that to let them know that we're, we're here, we're thinking about them, which is good, and that's, that's really good leadership. So I'm excited to continue to work with Jamil, as well as Commissioner Mckeja. You know, I'm always so used to calling him Jamil, Neil, yeah. But anyway, so the other exciting thing that's going on today, it's, I believe, is today is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and it's always awesome for us to show our appreciation for all of those who serve and protect us. So I hope you all stop and think about the men and women here in Montgomery County and beyond who put their lives on the line every day to serve their communities. While we're enjoying the holidays, and I think I mentioned this, I tended to, not the code blue, the Honored Blue Ceremony in Horsham, where they honored all 2028, was it 28 or 29, fellow officers that have passed or during their time in Montgomery County, being out there protecting us, and it was, it was a very humbling and honor to be there, just looking at the men and women, knowing that they're out there every day. It's a very tough job, and when we see our law enforcement out there, take a moment or two to show your gratefulness and say thank you for what you're doing, because they put themselves, their lives on the line every day for us, and I think that's just an honorable profession, and we should always recognize that. As mentioned, we had multiple fire departments that were out in the bitter cold battling the blaze in Norristown up on DeKalb Street. Luckily, no one was hurt, and there's, I forget, there was like four or five county fire departments, or fire departments for four or five different counties that actually came to help that night. It was a big fire, but they did an incredible job working together to ensure that that fire, although they probably didn't save the building itself, they, what they did do is they saved all the buildings around them, which was an unbelievable task, because with the cold, the winds, the everything, it was, as we see what's going on in California, that could easily have happened here in Norristown, so they did an incredible job. Another, it's unfortunate day that we have is January 11th, which is Human Trafficking Awareness Day. The Department of Homeland Security has designated this Saturday, the 11th, as Human Trafficking Awareness Day. Human trafficking is very secretive crime that preys on some of the most vulnerable among us, and it's hard to detect yet, the widespread in the U.S. and the globe, but it comes in several different forms, including sex trafficking, forced labor, and domestic servitude. And for many reasons, victims are often afraid to come forward, so it's something that we are battling throughout Pennsylvania and the country, and maybe again, we could, in January meeting or February meeting, we could have some representatives come and give the more details, and I really like to get into, I hate to say, but the gory details of what is involved in human trafficking, because I think people really need to understand. And, you know, we see it on TV, we see, you know, all different, you know, TV shows that kind of touch upon it, but it's a very serious situation that's occurring throughout Pennsylvania, throughout the United States, and globally, and I think the more awareness that we could bring to it, the more opportunity that we could help to curb and hopefully eventually someday stop, stop this unbelievable crimes that are occurring. So again, I want to thank everyone for being here. I hope everyone has an awesome new year, and as I said, I look forward to working with my counterparts here in 2025.
Great, thank you. All right, so next up, we have a public comment, and this public comment is on today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts. Any public comments that don't have anything to do with what's on today's agenda should be held to the later public comments section. David Morgan.
Good morning, Commissioners, Happy New Year. David Morgan from Amboy. I'm concerned about in the voting for B-9 contract amendment, which raises the archiving cost to almost $3 million. You know, an archived building was built, and to add to that cost, you have a process of archiving, so our taxpayers have been stretched. We've had the recent 9% hike in taxes, and I must say that I had done a little researching on my 17% claim, that might have been 17, because the Community College line on your April bill is another part to consider, so that was confusing me. I was always looking at the first line, and so I was finding the same numbers as usual, but instead of 17%, making us the worst, it would be second worst.
Mr. Morgan, are you talking about?
Affordable B-9. Yeah, affordable B-9.
Okay.
That we, taxpayers have $3 million for archiving, it's expensive, I think we have to admit. So also, B-10, the contract amendment about hydro, this is raised to $650,000 and $450, and that's the beginning. Capital projects are part of the reason for the bond issues that we've had lately, and there's talk about another bond issue, which is indebtedness. Bucks County had 0% tax increase this past year and two years ago, so it was 060, but we had 8139. So I think we really have to see how much can our residents have over five years. I calculated our tax increase to be 50.8%, or if you look at the combined tax with Community College, 46.6%. So you have a lot more we're paying, and people are trying to afford meals, trying to afford rent. Rent are expected by tax increases. So the cost of living for us with B-9 and B-10 that you're going to vote, I would say table that at least, and study, do you really want to do hydro with all the costs, capital costs involved there? Bucks County has tried to then decrease indebtedness, and there's a report I can give to Secretary Tom, Commissioner DiBello, I can give a report from the 2424 operating budget, news flash, county news, and press releases, how they are decreasing debt obligations, and also they are working on merging departments and offloading costly assets. Hopefully, the prison that was great to preserve would be sold, private use, so we wouldn't have to carry burdens. So just think of any ways in this vote, B-9 and 10, combined with all the other spending, that this year we can really dedicate to getting our tax down to zero increase after five years, we don't have a sixth year of increasing taxes.
Thanks, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you for your comment. I just want to clarify on 9, what you're referring to. We're not increasing the budget or the cost for the archives of $3 million, almost $3 million, we're just adding $8,900 to, to additional digitation of files for the Office of Public Health. So it's, it's not increasing by $3 million, it's just, it's $8,900 is what it's increasing by, I just want to clarify that.
John McClumfy?
Yes. John McClumfy, I live in Abington. Right now, I'm aware of the township, county's 9% tax increase. In Abington Township, they're also talking about building a middle school at approximately $250 million, which would cause the average taxpayer to see their taxes going, their school taxes alone to go up by $400 per year for the next 10 years. Well, Abington Township is made up a growing, large percentage of those who are in fixed incomes.
Sir, is this about today's pending votes? Because if it's not, if it's about taxes, it should be the later public comments section.
I just want to let everybody know about that, that there's people that won't be able to live on this there with the tax increase.
Thank you. Ed Moy?
It's been addressed.
Thanks. That's it for public comments. Okay. All right, next up, we're going to do our board organization. So I want to call for nominations for Chair of the Board of Montgomery County Commissioners. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Neil Mckeja to be Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none. I'd like to make a motion to close nominations for Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comments? So I have some quick comments before I hand over the gavel and before we vote. All right. Well, so let's, let's vote, and then we'll, and then I'll make some comments. So moving to a vote, all in favor, aye. Anybody else in favor? Commissioner DiBello?
I'm thinking.
Okay.
I didn't hear anybody else yet.
I said aye.
Oh.
And so did Neil.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Who is it for?
Chair.
Oh. Aye.
All right, motion carries, congratulations. The Chair, Chair of the Board, but before I move my seat, so I made it warm for you. So, look, in all seriousness, when Commissioner Mckeja and I were campaigning together and elected as a ticket in November 2023, we came into office with an agreement and a commitment to shared governance and shared leadership. We both believe strongly in the principles and shared values that have led us to many achievements over the last year, and I've mentioned some of them, so I won't rehash those achievements. And I know that this whole entire board, but especially Commissioner Mckeja and I, we remain committed to those values. This decision to share leadership with Commissioner Mckeja is a choice that I made with intention and conviction. It reflects not only the value of unique perspectives and lived experiences in leadership, but also my shared belief that in the power of teamwork and shared responsibility. So I just want to reiterate my commitment to serving people of Montgomery County remains unwavering, and this transition allows us to combine our talents and leadership in new and impactful ways. It's important to me that our community understands this decision is an affirmation of trust, partnership, and shared vision. Commissioner Mckeja and I are united in our dedication to the residents of Montgomery County, and I look forward to continuing to work side by side with him, as well as Commissioner DiBello, to advance the priorities that matter most to our constituents. And so I want to congratulate you, and I'll pass you the gavel.
I think we still need to actually...
We still need to vote?
We need to vote for actually appointing Chair.
Oh, God. All that.
We did the vote for nomination.
I could say that all over again. Okay, so we have a nomination, so let's pass it back, see, we're, we're new at this. All right, so then, appointment of Chair, sorry, thanks, Lee.
You voted for nominations, yeah.
Nomination, okay, so I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Neil Mckeja as Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners for a term to expire on January 5th, 2026. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mckeja, I already gave comments, all in favor, aye. Any opposed? Okay, I'm hearing none, motion carries, congratulations.
Good? Ready to switch this thing? Can I turn it over?
Yep. Take it. as Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners for a term to expire on January 5th, 2026. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mckeja. I already gave comments. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? Okay. Um, hearing none. Motion carries. Congratulations.
I've watched this for, I don't know how many times. So let's see how I do. Um, I'll have some remarks to make. Uh, I'll make them at the end of the board organization. But, all right. So I will, uh, ask for nominations for Vice Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Any other nominations? I'll nominate Commissioner Jamila Winder. Are there any other nominations? Motion to close nominations for Vice Chair. Is there a second?
A second thought.
Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and we'll move to a motion to appoint, uh, Jamila Winder as Vice Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners for a term to expire on January 5th, 2026. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, finally, uh, we don't need nominations for Secretary, I guess, right? We just make the appointment. Is that right?
Yes.
So we'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Yvonne Turner as Board Secretary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, okay. So before we move on, I just want to echo what Commissioner Winder said, which is that, you know, when we ran together, uh, we made a decision to share governance. It had never been done before in the county. In the past, there'd always just been one chair. Uh, and, uh, when other commissioners came in and were selected, they automatically became, uh, Vice Chair for the duration of their term until there was someone else. Uh, but we decided to do this differently. And, uh, I think it shows our commitment, uh, to sharing leadership on key priorities and, uh, giving each other the chance to serve, uh, in this role. And, uh, I want to take a moment for talking about, uh, this year and what it needs to mean, but just to, again, reiterate, uh, the historic moment that we've had, uh, in, in our representation here. Commissioner Winder served as the first black woman ever in the history, uh, of Montgomery County and has done so, uh, as she said, in setting an example for so many, uh, to, you know, look to her leadership, uh, and be inspired to realize what public service can look like. And I just want to thank you for setting such a tremendous example and inspiring so many people. And I want to ask everyone to lead in an applause for her extraordinary leadership. When I think about, um, you know, my position this year, and I'll be the first South Asian, first Asian American ever in the history of Pennsylvania to serve as a county chair, uh, I remain, uh, committed to ensuring, we remain committed that, uh, Montgomery County is a place where no matter who you are, uh, where you're from, that we seek to represent you and that we recognize this county is diverse. It's, uh, there are many people in many different backgrounds, perspectives, and places, but we as commissioners elected, uh, to serve are here to represent everyone. And I think you'll see that in our commitments and the priorities that not only we've had last year, but that we continue into 2025, uh, at a time where some of that can be, uh, called into question, uh, at different levels of government. Um, so I want to just overview some of the observations that, uh, I've had this year that I think we collectively share, but there is an interest, uh, first in maintaining what Monco, uh, has done best, which is lead and maintaining that reputation. So we've seen it in human services and, uh, we invested this year through actually grant funding and, uh, kicking off this first ever behavioral, uh, health, uh, center, this emergency center for mental health. Uh, we've seen it in our public safety apparatus in terms of interventions on gun violence. We've seen it, uh, throughout our row offices in a number of different priorities, but Monco has really led the way, uh, and set a standard for the Commonwealth. And that's something that we want to continue across the board. So, uh, we, uh, over the last several years, had the recovery office focused on, uh, on just that recovery from the pandemic, from all the economic, uh, turmoil that came out of that. And one of the priorities is shifting that into an office that is going to focus on innovation, efficiency, and, uh, making sure that we run government effectively, as effectively as possible. And Florida's united in this front. So we're going to see, uh, a change there in terms of the structure of that office and some of the priorities this year. I don't think we're going to name the office after a cryptocurrency, but I do think, uh, if anyone has any, uh, suggestions, uh, on how, uh, we can shape the priorities of an office focused on efficiency, innovation, uh, and improving government processes, uh, we're hoping to that. So that's something that I think we'll all work on together. Uh, and it's going to be a priority this year. And, you know, there are many public commenters who have been interested in that. Uh, second, uh, we're going to see this, uh, in our salary board later, but we will be, uh, voting on the first ever Director, Director of Immigrant Affairs. Uh, and I think it's really important for us to be doing that now at a time where there's tremendous uncertainty about, uh, what is happening, uh, at the federal level. And Commissioner Winder and I have spoken at length about ensuring that every person in our community, uh, is represented, feels safe, uh, and that we recognize, uh, those who are essential, uh, to the fabric of Montgomery County and seek to represent them. So we'll talk more about what that means. Uh, we also have the first ever, uh, Chief Sustainability Officer, uh, on the salary board today. And that is a person who's going to ensure that we continue to meet our targets, uh, on sustainability, on climate, many of which were set, uh, by the previous, uh, boards. Uh, that we will revisit to ensure that we, uh, we are meeting those goals and perhaps accelerating them, uh, where possible. Uh, we're also going to ensure, and we'll talk more about this, that we represent, uh, and stand up for those members of marginalized communities through investments, um, in diversity, equity, and inclusion. Uh, and we'll hear more about that from the salary board, uh, and work with all of our row offices to ensure across the board, the county, uh, is responsive, effective, and efficient for every resident. So those are some of the main themes that I think we're going to see, uh, this year. And I really look forward to working, uh, across the board with all of our, all of our row offices, uh, on improving processes, representing, uh, our constituents as best as possible, and making sure that we represent all of our constituents. So, um, that's a little bit of what we're going to hear today, um, on our agenda and in the salary board, um, and much more to come. So, again, thank you, um, for all of your leadership. I know these are all shared priorities and things that we ran on together. And look forward to working with the whole team and making sure that we can continue to execute. So, thank you. Um, so with that, we'll go back to the agenda and, um, I'll have to, um, brush up on some of the process here. But first consideration is, um, an ordinance, uh, on a bond issue, which I'll bring up for CFO Dean Durtone, uh, to discuss this. Dean?
Morning Commissioners. Okay. Um, so I just wanted to give you a high-level overview of our planning on, uh, new money bond issue for 2025. The, the planning has been underway since the budget has been adopted for 25. Um, the 25 budget does anticipate new capital funding, um, for capital projects for 25 and 26. Any action that you're going to take today on the bond ordinance will authorize us to move ahead and, um, start working on the transaction to get it complete over the next six years. Next slide, please. So, serving on the county financing team, um, and they're here with us today, uh, Suzanne Mays, Scott Mihok, um, both with Cozen O'Connor, uh, Dan Coswell, John Crady, uh, with PFM, um, both who have served with us on, uh, prior bond issues as well. Next slide. Um, so, in the capital budget, um, for 2025, as you can see, um, there's about 245 million of projected spending. Um, probably over 75% of it is represented by transportation, road and bridges, uh, county facilities and park improvements, and, um, the county campus plan. Some of the, um, major projects underway, uh, the renovation of the county library, um, we're reconstructing 26 of 130 countywide bridges. Um, this building here is being renovated, uh, on the interior, um, since the exterior has been completed. Um, and there are a number of improvements in, in the parks, our trails, um, open space preservation, and expansion of our county parks. Next slide, please. Um, so what you're looking at here is pretty much a snapshot of the county's new money bond issues going back to 19. And as you can see, uh, we completed new money bond issues in 19, 21, 22, and most recently in the fall of 23. Um, you know, the, the pricing overall, that's the, the tick or the true interest cost, has been favorable to us over the years. And obviously, you know, the market has changed, um, where we are right now. But you can see, overall, we priced, you know, slightly under 2% back in 21. Um, you know, that was when interest rates hit a record low, uh, very favorable. But we've been between the 2 and 4% range. And, uh, we think that, um, some of the preliminary modeling that's been done on this bond issue that we're probably going to price somewhere in the 4% range based on, um, current market, market conditions that exist today. Next slide, please. Just to go over, uh, the structure of the bond issue. So, um, and as I said, this is what we anticipated, um, when we developed the budget for 25. Uh, we're going to have three separate series. There's going to be a Series A that's going to be roughly, uh, the, these are the proceeds that will be produced by the bond issue, approximately $150 million that'll be used specifically, um, for all the capital projects, um, that are contained in the, um, five-year capital improvement program. Um, that's everything excluding roads and bridges. We have a separate series, um, of $15 million that'll be completely dedicated to the roads and bridges capital projects, um, which is a separate functional area that, uh, is, um, broken out within the capital budget. And then there's going to be a smaller series of $4 million that'll be utilized for the county's economic development program. Um, the last time that we did a bond issue like this of this size for the economic development program was back in 17. It was specifically used for the county's business loan program. Um, the first two series will be tax-exempt bonds. Um, but because of the use, uh, of the economic development program funds, those are taxable bonds and they price, um, a little bit higher than the, uh, tax-exempt bonds. But as I said, on a blended basis, we think the true interest cost is going to be around, um, in the 4% range. Uh, so the plan to issue general obligation bonds for all three of these series, uh, to primarily fund the 25 and the 26 projects, this will likely carry us through the end of the year and then into 26 before we have to do another new bond issue again. Uh, the debt service from this bond issue will be funded, um, through the general fund. We have $5 million, um, allocated within the budget, um, for, uh, the, the planned sale. So we will have the debt service covered, uh, for 25. Next slide, please. So next steps, um, upon approval today of the bond ordinance by the board, uh, are, and, you know, obviously it's a little more complicated than just these six steps, but, uh, our next major hurdle is obtaining the county's credit rating from Moody's. Um, as you know, we're AAA rated, um, and have been for the past seven consecutive years. Uh, and they're hopeful that, you know, we will continue with, um, that rating as we go through this process. Uh, after that, we put together a preliminary official statement and a notice of bond sale. Um, and this will happen around the end of February into, um, early March, based on the tentative schedule that we have in place. Uh, and then there's a competitive bond sale that's, um, planned for and set up. So we have a competitive bond sale. It's, um, web-based. Uh, it will have three different series and we're targeting somewhere around mid-March to get to market. Uh, we typically do that, um, just before a board meeting. So we will plan it around that. And then we report out to the board at the board meeting, uh, of, of the sale results. Um, and then typically 30 days later, we close on the bonds, um, and then the proceeds are received by the county. Uh, so that's targeted for about April. Um, it is staff's recommendation, um, that we move ahead with this as was planned for in the 25 budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as described by Mr. Dean Durtone. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment?
Quick, uh, question. Series C, the $4 million, could you give a example of how that money is planned to be spent or used, utilized?
Yeah. So, um, it will be a continuation of the county's existing business loan program that's managed through the Commerce Department, um, and the redevelopment authority that are the primary administrators of the program. Uh, so that, that's the plan, uh, in the short term to use those proceeds.
Steve Forrester isn't here, as you know. I mean, I think it's important to point out that that program, uh, through providing those low-interest loans, uh, throughout Montgomery County has been proven to be very beneficial to multiple businesses. And, and we've seen a positive return on the money that we've put out there so far. And that's what we're talking about continuing, right?
Yes. Yeah. It, it has been, um, successful, uh, in recent years. It was implemented with the, um, the bond issue of 2017. And, uh, we've pretty much depleted those funds. However, uh, at the time, you know, the plan was that, uh, that funding would be used towards the program and it would recycle as the loans were paid back, they're, they're utilized again. And, and that's what's happening. Um, I think that, uh, with Steve coming on, uh, in the Commerce Department, um, there's been a stronger initiative towards that program. So we're going to see more activity, um, in the next 18 months.
Yeah. At some point later this year, we should get a recap of money out on the street versus the return and, and kind of show how, how we're, you know, that it's, it's, it's an investment that's going to grow over time. And that, you know, eventually it could really become self-sustaining as we, as we continue to put, you know, do these, these loans and working with the business community. Um, and just the other thing is, is that I, I really think as a board, we need to go back and really rethink, um, the whole library project because it's hard to communicate out there that we're spending $65 million on a library that roughly 15% of the county would utilize. And the renderings of what's come through so far, about one-third of the building is going to be a public library and two-thirds of the building is going to be used for more community-oriented type, uh, thing. So I really think we need to take a hard look at that plan as we continue forward because as, as we are moving, I can't continue to support that. So, um, unless I get better detail, we have better conversations about that, that expenditure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. These are motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so I will, uh, bring up Maureen Calder, our First Assistant Solicitor, uh, as well as Dean, if you'd like to add additional comments, uh, to discuss our collective bargaining agreement with Asme Local 676.
Thank you. Be for you as a resolution requesting authorization to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with Asme Local 676. Local 676 represents 248 employees within county row offices. This includes our deputy sheriffs and administrative positions in row offices. Uh, the prior contract, uh, with Local 676 expired at the end of last year. And this new contract, which would be effective January 1st, 2025, demonstrates the county's commitment to providing competitive compensation, comprehensive benefits, and a positive work environment for employees. It will be a three-year contract and includes a new deputy sheriff 10-tier wage scale in 2025 and increases the deputy sheriff's starting salary to $55,000 per year. Finally, it provides for annual base wage increases for all other, uh, uh, union members. And it is recommended by our solicitor, our, uh, CFO, and our, uh, director, Acting Director of Human Resources that we enter into this agreement.
Question. Any questions? How many people does this cover?
248 employees.
Okay. Thank you. Um, all right. I will make a motion to approve, uh, resi- All right, I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number One as described by Ms. Maureen Calder. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a vacancy on the Board of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, also known as SEPTA. I just want to thank Rob Fox for his service to the county. He served nearly ten years in this role. He thankfully will be remaining on the SEPTA Board as the governor's appointee, but that means we have a vacancy. You did this with the community college, but I'd rather you make the motion if you don't mind.
Just add, just add.
Do you want to put this guy on?
You can make the motion. Go ahead.
I'll make the motion. We'll talk about it in a second, but I'm going to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Neil McKeeja, great guy, to the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority to serve the remainder of the unexpired term of Rob Fox, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners after that, in accordance with the duly adopted bylaws. Is that the bylaws of SEPTA, to clarify? Lee? I don't know.
That would be the SEPTA Transportation Authority bylaws.
Yeah, okay. All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment?
So as, we're going to have the pleasure of having a county commissioner serve on the SEPTA Board, it's my expectation that we'll finally get some detailed information about the deficit spending that's currently going on in SEPTA, because every time additional hundreds of millions of dollars that has to be given to SEPTA from the state, it increases our portion of county taxes that have to go into that money as well. And, you know, we have a serious problem in this area with SEPTA, because it runs out of deficit, the funding has to be increased continuously. There's a lot of questions as far as where is the money spent, how the money's spent? So I'm looking for good details around that, because it's hard to sit there blindly, just give over millions of dollars to the board, because the majority of Montgomery County residents don't use SEPTA, but majority of all Montgomery County residents have to pay for SEPTA. So we should have more oversight and more insight on what's going on with the actual expenditures.
Okay, let's, yeah, so I'm, I'll just add, one, we've always had a commissioner on the SEPTA Board. It is really important, because SEPTA is critical, whether we personally use it or not, it's critical to the economy of our county, the entire region as a whole, and there's absolutely a funding crisis with SEPTA right now. If you look comparatively at other regions in other states, there is significantly more funding that comes from the states into transportation authorities like SEPTA. And one of the key roles I think we can play through the SEPTA Board is advocating for the Commonwealth to, to fund SEPTA. So much of the economic activity that provides the tax base for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania comes from Southeastern Pennsylvania, and the challenge is really explaining to the rest of the state why we need to fund transportation here, because the economic activity that happens in Southeastern Pennsylvania benefits the entire Commonwealth. So that's part of the argument that I'm going to make as a member of the SEPTA Board, being an advocate for funding public transit. And when we think about our goals on reducing traffic congestion, when we think about goals in terms of climate sustainability, having a public transit system that is reliable, that is safe, that is easily accessible, is critical. So I'm going to advocate for all of those things, I serving on this board, and I want to thank Commissioner Winder for seconding that motion. I will bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the motion passes. And again, I want to thank Rob Fox for his service, and thank our SEPTA Chair and recent Montgomery County Commissioner Ken Lawrence for his serving under his leadership on the Board. So with that, I'll ask Marty Moss to join us to talk about the personnel list.
Good morning, Commissioners. You should have in front of you a final copy of the Commissioner Department's personnel list. It's a four-page document dated January eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, and has a timestamp of two twenty-three. These transactions have been reviewed by management and are now presented for your consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the January ninth, two thousand and twenty-five personnel presentation, as given by Marty Moss, Director of Talent Acquisition. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, moving on to bids and RFPs. I'll make a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to Item J, awards of contracts. Motion to approve the contracts, award amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County under attached Exhibit B. Is there a second?
I want to separate ten.
So the way I think we need to handle that is to make, I mean, if you can make a preliminary amendment, if you want to.
Motion will be one through nine and eleven through fourteen.
So I will amend my motion to approve the contracts, sorry, approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B, with the exception of Item Ten. Is there a second?
Second.
Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I'll make a motion to approve Item Ten under Exhibit B, contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? I'll just comment, this is the hydroelectric facility. This has been explored by the county for a number of years. It would help us meet renewable energy goals, it would help us save money, and thanks to technology that has changed in recent years, it's more efficient than ever to invest in hydroelectric power of this nature. So it's an important project in our capital budget, and that's why I'm supporting it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hey, go ahead.
I just have problems with this, because I'm not convinced on all the details that we provided at this point in time, so I just kind of support this at this moment.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so motion passes two to one. Okay, with that, I'll move on to awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force. Motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewal, renewals for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit C. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, move on to general public comment. Do we have any qualities?
David Morgan.
David Morgan of Amber, when you have that vote about the bond, it just says F, authorization to issue its general bond obligations. It doesn't really say new money bond issue, and I would vigorously am against that, because the last one adds twelve point eight million per year to two thousand and forty-three to our debt service. And we can prop up AAA by the taxpayers keeping the tax more and more. I think that's an open-ended thing of when these capital projects keep going on and on and aren't resolved. We have a justice center, the goal is four hundred and fifteen million dollars, but we don't have a recent report since the summer. We had it spring. Commissioner DeBello asked for that report in the spring and the, in the summer, but then, when is this going to end, four hundred and fifteen million dollar project? And what about the, this building here? It's ongoing, so continually from like the nineteen, twenty, eighteen, it's been continually addressed and spending funding, but it's sort of like, it's revised, the capital budget keeps revising each year. So we, we taxpayers just wonder, well, how much are we going to be out now with this newest bond? So between last meeting, the end of the raising nine percent, this meeting going to debt right away, we feel like we're not being listened to, as one of the speakers mentioned last meeting. So one thing we could do is consider, do we need more diversity, equity, inclusion, pension positions? Could that be merged into some other positions? Because it seems we're really diverse here in the county staff. And what about the taxpayers? We having to afford that. Also, I mentioned about the prison going to private rather than county use to save money. So we need to really see, reporting this year, as the year goes on, how are we dealing with a courthouse? Is that going to be fully renovated, and we will be, come check that one off? Or are we going to have lingering cost and capital projects? So can we really think about that Bucks County model? I'm going to give this in at the end of the meeting, to see all the steps they've taken to reduce taxes. Because people are stretched, as they admitted in the two thousand and twenty-four, people are stretched, they didn't want to do six percent. Zero percent, six percent, zero percent. That's a great goal. And then again, how much is hydro going to cost? You can study it for six hundred and fifty million, six hundred and fifty thousand, but then how many millions are going to be involved? It's closely, Commissioner McKeeja is more efficient, but we want to know what is the total we're going to have to pay. And then again, how about programs that are not costing so much money, like Manco Mamas? We didn't study that at all last year. How is it being effective? Like, it's a great program, it encourages live births, the joy of birth for minority groups, so that could be more presented. Adoption was also presented, but very small. So those are areas for people's needs to really consider going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
The bond issue, just to answer your question, is, the way that the county does it here with these projects is that they borrow portions of the money annually as the project's maturing forward. So the courthouse, which is scheduled to be done second, third quarter, which is Phase Two, right? But then there's, Phase Three is the remodeling of the existing courthouse. So there'll be more, there'll be additional bond issues in the future to continue to fund those projects until they're completed. But they're, they're, pretty much, the Phase Two is running a little over budget, but not excessively over budget. And, and I agree that we should have an update in, in the near future on where that project's at. And as I mentioned during the budget meetings, I hope that our meetings in two thousand and twenty-five become a little bit more business-oriented, that we really start diving into these numbers, because we can't continue to just spend and tax. So you're right on a lot of that.
Dr. Darby?
Go ahead.
Happy New Year. So I just wanted to come and say thank you so much for your leadership last year, Commissioner Winder, and congratulations on the new chair, Neil. Also, I want to thank you all for your partnership at the coroner's office. You know, the, no one usually sees the coroner. So I just wanted to come up here and just thank you for the support and the partnership at our office. You know, in the last year, we've been doing a lot of great things and enhancing our office and also supporting our community to the best of our abilities and making sure we're doing quality work. So I just wanted to come and say thank you for the support and the partnership at the coroner's office.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for everything you're doing. I know you're working hard to innovate and continue to improve the function of the office, and I'm still traumatized by everything I see or saw on my tour, and I won't spare everyone what that was like, but it really underscored the hard work that you and the whole team do in the office. Thank you.
Hello, Barbara Furman, New Hanover Township. I, I didn't come with any prepared comments, but I do want to reflect on, I saw Commissioner Winder at the polls on Election Day. He came to our polling place and got to see how hard everyone is working and how, you know, we make sure that the in-person vote is very transparent, and we hope that you will continue to encourage people to vote in person on Election Day. The budget, we look at these increases, and now this year it's nine percent. So, and I'm assuming the partners are taking full responsibility to the taxpayer, saying, is there, are there places where you can cut things and maybe save some money, and then in the future, you have that money instead of just spending it, just because you put it in the budget? The, the Norris Town Library, is that library a county facility?
Yes.
So it's the county library?
Yeah, it's not Norris Town Library, it's Montgomery County Library.
It's the Montgomery County Library, okay. But it, the assumption is that its function is to be a library, correct? So all the extra things, you know, is that all needed in our county taxes? And so we would hope, we would actually expect and demand that, that everyone on this board that does work nicely together, take the approach that Commissioner DeBello takes and questions, and then says, where can we save some money? Where can we look at, you know, just looking at the taxpayer and saying, we need less of an increase. It's been, it's now forty-five percent over the last five years. And the taxpayer, all of us are asking, you know, when does that end? So, thank you.
Can I take a point of privacy really quickly? So I just want to be clear, while Commissioner DeBello is vocal in these meetings, and I appreciate a lot of times he asks the question to better educate those that are in attendance. That doesn't mean that Commissioner McKeeja and I aren't asking the hard questions and making the difficult decisions. And so I want, like, to remind everyone that I know that I, as well as Commissioner McKeeja, take our fiduciary responsibility really seriously. And, you know, when you don't know the inner workings of the budget and all of the things that we have to fund, we may not publicly discuss it, but we're working diligently with staff to ensure that we're cognizant of taxpayer burden. So that's not a debate on your comments, but Commissioner DeBello is not the only one that asks the difficult questions. Thanks.
I'll just add a couple of points. The nature of funding, local funding, when it's entirely based on property taxes, is that it has to go up, right? It's not automatically going up, as would be the case with income or sales taxes, where there's higher sales. When prices go up, sales taxes generate more revenue, right? When incomes go up, income taxes generate more revenue. When property values go up, our property tax stays at the assessed value, which is much lower. And so where property values have tripled over time, our taxes have not tripled over time. So there are states in which the property tax actually just goes up automatically with the value or with inflation. This is not one of those states. The way that we can assess whether we're at the right level or is, one, can we deliver on the services effectively and efficiently that we've been delivering on? We can look at other counties and look at what they're doing. There are, there are. There are counties that have raised their taxes 36%, 40% in one year. We thankfully have never done that, which is a surprise. It's hard for people to plan around that. Smaller gradual increases are the responsible way to handle what is inevitably necessary to function as a county government. And in terms of savings, I think our team has done a tremendous job finding a lot of different creative ways to save millions and millions of dollars. So while there are counties that have raised taxes, you know, to 40% in one year, we've never done that. And we've also, at the same time, found ways to save across the board. So that's something that we think about all the time, and Monco is in a very good place in terms of what we've been able to deliver efficiently at a low cost to the taxpayer. Any other comments?
John McGlupphy.
Yes. I'm John McGlupphy. I live in Abington. I'm aware that there's a 9% tax increase this year. Well, Abington Township is approximately 56,000 people, which a large percentage of them are on fixed incomes and live from paycheck to paycheck. It's not just in Abington, my brother lives in Horsesham, who makes a lot more money than I do, and he's shocked when he sees it's a 9% tax increase. What this tax increase, addition to other tax increases we're already facing, as our school taxes would be, it's going to cause a lot of people to either to not be able to afford to live here anymore. And that's where there needs to be some accountability more for all these county projects there in there, because I know it's, I know it's like living from paycheck to paycheck, and I mean, and how it's difficult to make ends meet. These other people, they say if they're retirees, they won't be able to afford to stay here. So that's where the major concern is there, everybody. I mean, are there residents that live there have voiced the same opinion as I have as theirs? I just want to know why there isn't more accountability here or where there is accountability in these projects. And if that's the main things I want to bring up out, but we got to be more accountable for these experiences if people aren't able to stay here.
Thank you. Yeah, I will just add, one of the things that we can do at the county is, one, make people aware of the tax rebates and exemptions. There are several, some of which apply specifically to seniors that are on a fixed income. So that can be something we work with our state representatives on to make sure we get out the word so people can apply for those. And that's something that can be a focus this year as well. Go ahead. Anything else? Okay. With that, we just had a public comment. Are there any closing commissioner comments?
Just your other comment, I mean, it was mentioned a few times about, you know, the amount of residents that we, diverse residents that we represent throughout Montgomery County and how dedicated we are to that. So I just want to, I look forward to potentially being chair next year representing that diverse community as well.
All right, we'll think about it.
You can start campaigning now.
We're both from northeastern Pennsylvania, so actually we covered.
We don't represent them up there.
Okay, with that, I will motion to adjourn the January 9, 2025, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Let's start the salary.
Bye.
We're working on your name.
How are you?
Good, Tom.
Excited?
Yes.
Yeah. Try to make it exciting.
So call to order the January 9, 2025, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there any public comment? For public comments, that will bring Marty Moss up to present the annual compensation of county employees.
Tom, I'd just like to say I love your name tag there.
Yes.
Very nice. And congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
As far as everybody should have in front of them, a final copy of the annual list of county employees. The list includes current county employees and their compensation as well as current vacant positions. In addition to the salary board list, includes newly hired employees and employees going off role. Finally, the list includes new positions that were evaluated and approved in the 2025 budget. The annual list of county employees is a 61-page document dated January 8, 2025, at a timestamp of 2:23 PM. All transactions have been reviewed by management and are now presented for your consideration.
Okay, I will make the motion to approve the annual compensation of county employees as presented by Marty Moss. Is there a second?
I'd like to separate off the section of new positions.
Sorry, I can make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any board comment?
I don't understand. I'm asking to separate off new positions. You didn't make a motion. You weren't done making a motion. I clearly said I want to separate off new positions.
So there's a motion on the floor. Is there any board comment in relation to that motion? Is there a second?
I just have some comments about some of the positions that we're going to be hiring. So one, again, I just want to thank our county employees for the work that they do day in and day out, and I know that we're approving all the salaries heading into 2025. I'm particularly excited about the work that we're going to do to expand our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and that's been led by Donna, who, I don't know if she's online, but she's not here. And I just want to give Donna just some kudos, so bear with me. But, you know, she's done a really remarkable job understanding and highlighting what the real investment needs to be to ensure that at the county, we have diversity of thought, experience, and approach, and it's represented in all that we do as a county. So we're proposing four additional positions heading into 2025 to expand the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And this added capacity, as Commissioner McKees talked about, will focus on immigration, data, training, and administering, you know, all types of programming. And when I think about when I came in here two years ago, and I saw the work that Donna was doing oftentimes alone or leveraging kind of people that sit on our committee and community members, you know, we felt it important to ensure that she has the proper resources to do this work right. So I'm thankful that we're going to expand that office and give Donna the tools and support, the talent that she needs in order to do this work right. If you look at other counties of our size, I sometimes spend my weekends looking at what other counties are doing, not just in Pennsylvania, but in border states, we are way behind what we need to be doing around this work. But Donna has made it seem as if she's got a team of 10. So I'm excited to work alongside her in the new year, and I know you will as well, to expand that work in that office.
Thank you, absolutely. And I'll add, you know, in two of the positions I mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, Director of Immigrant Affairs and Chief Sustainability, I think it's really important that we base our policy on reality. And I say that because there's so much misinformation out there and really unfortunate characterizations of the role that immigrants play in society right now. And from everything that I've learned in this role and as an elected leader is that our communities would not function without immigrants who are doing essential work across the board, in every sector, in every industry, and we wouldn't thrive without them. And there are so many things in which the services we provide as a county and the work we're trying to do are dependent on our representing everyone and making sure that they feel safe. For example, if there is a resident who, you know, is afraid that because of their immigration status, they might not be able to seek a protection for an abuse order, we need to be able to let them know that that's not the case. If there is a witness to a key criminal trial regarding, you know, an act of violence in which justice needs to be served, we need to make sure that regardless of that person's status, they're confident that they can serve as a witness so that justice can be administered. There are a number of areas and issues in which we need to include and ensure that people are fully recognized and protected if they've been here for decades and decades and have served as an essential member of our community and really no other country other than the United States. So no matter what's happening at the federal level, I think we need to recognize that immigrants, regardless of status, make an essential part of our community here in Montgomery County. And part of the work that we do and all of the roles that we have are essential to recognize that. So look forward to talking more about what that office will engage in and do. In addition, I think the Chief Sustainability Officer is a position that we've talked about for a long time, and it's happening. So I'm excited that we've got this on the table, which means that there will be one person who's accountable, responsible for knowing whether we're achieving goals in relation to sustainability, climate, renewable energy, all of these things that we've planned on, and our planning commission has done fantastic work in this. This person will be closely working with the planning commission, but making sure that we have one person who will be the point for all of that is going to be critical. And we've got a study that's underway right now to discover, to understand how our Eagle Bill campus, which is where many of our 24/7 emergency operations are housed, can produce and consume energy more efficiently and sustainably. So that's the kind of project where, for example, making sure that you have alternative power housing our 911 center or that it can sustain during disaster. It's kind of thing that has reverberations directly into public safety and other work that we've seen. So this role is one that we'll be looking across the board. How can sustainability, how can energy efficiency, renewable energy be utilized to support and bolster all of our county services? So those are two things that I'm particularly supportive of in this new year. Go ahead.
First off, when he completed his presentation, he didn't ask if there was any questions. Second off, I asked for this to be separated before the motion was seconded. Since you've ignored all of that, I'm going to clearly state that from the, the reason I want to separate off new positions is because, for two reasons. One is, is there's a lot of new positions in there that I haven't seen any job descriptions. I haven't seen any directive as far as what these people would be doing. It's, there's, when you take away the positions that are funded through outside sources of the state and all that, we're looking at adding over $2 million in new positions. And when we went through the budget process, I was concerned about the $36 million deficit in the budget. I was clear about why I didn't support the budget, why I didn't support that $36 million deficit, because I have concerns about us doing full departmental analysis. So I can't, I can't just keep adding, you know, millions of dollars onto our payroll. We look at six more solicitor positions. Montgomery County's been functioning. I don't understand, or four, yeah, it's six positions, additional staff for the solicitor's office. I don't understand why all of a sudden we have to grow that department by six more people. So I have a lot, I've had a lot of questions, and when we, if we would have separated off like I requested, I would have stated that I was in favor of supporting the positions that are budget, that are funded by the state. That's, most of those are the HHS positions. I was fine with supporting the certified forensic pathologist upgrade position because I know it's been hard to find somebody and hire them. So we had to increase the salaries there. And I was curious about the Director of Immigrant Affairs, but I would have probably supported it because I know we have a large immigrant communities out there, so we need to have some better interaction with those communities. But as far as everything else, I was not going to support. So because we weren't able to honor my request of separating this off, you're forcing me to state no on the entire motion.
Okay. So just one thing as a matter of protocol, if someone is making a motion, interrupting them is not the course of business and how we're going to conduct meetings?
I can interrupt because I was trying to stop you because you went from point A to point B without asking if there was a question or interaction. So I tried to get in there.
So if we want to be very strict about Robert's rules, I would not yield you the floor even now to interrupt me further.
You can say whatever you want.
Okay. Motion is made. We're not, we're, if it's seconded, which it was, then the consideration happens to the motion. You could make a motion or make a friendly amendment to go line item by line item and say what you like and don't like. You would need someone to second it.
You don't have to explain Robert's rules to me.
Actually, part of the, part of the rule. But with that, I'll just say, the reason I think we do this at once, and it's a tradition to do this at once, is that it's, how many positions, Tom? Do you know? 2,800?
Yeah, I was like, yeah.
2,800. So we're not going to go line item by line item. And all of these were funded in the last budget, which actually was voted on and supported unanimously by all three commissioners. So we funded that budget. None of this is coming out of, you know, debt spending or whatnot. This was all accounted for, and that's why I'm supporting it, so.
So to be clear, I'm only referring to new positions.
Any other comments? Okay, with that, I'll raise for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, all opposed?
No.
Motion passes three to one. Any? Thank you. Great. So with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn the January 9, 2025, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second? Second? Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye. Go.
Meeting is adjourned.